Meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, March 8th, 2022 is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Councilman Fig.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray.
Our God and our heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We ask for your wisdom as we conduct the business of this county. We thank you for our lives and what you've done for us. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you very much. Next, we have petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Krasinski?
President Morton, I'd like to reappoint Dennis Heckman to the Lakeville Economic Development Commission, Jean Reese to the Walkerton Economic Development Commission, and Sarah Williams to the North Liberty Economic Development Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Krasinski. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Dennis Heckman is reappointed to the Lakeville Economic Development Commission, Jean Reese to the Walkerton Economic Development Commission, and Sarah Williams to the North Liberty Economic Development Commission. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 11th, 2022, public hearing? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the January 11th, 2022, public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Report from the county commissioners? No report. Report from any council special committee? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 3822?
Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring abortion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-1, 2.1, at Sac Petitioner EFS Limited.
Bill Number 3822 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill 3922, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land use, chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code is amended for property located at 13750 McKinley Highway and unaddressed 1.41 acres abutting to the south from our single-family district to I industrial district, petitioner Penn Township of St. Joseph County, Indiana.
Bill Number 3922 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill 4022, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land use, chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code is amended for property located at 56435 Oak Road and 56369 Oak Road from single-family district to commercial district, petitioner Sun's Property Holding LLC.
Bill Number 4022 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill 4122, in ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Sun's Property Holdings LLC for property being located at 56435 Oak Road and 56369 Oak Road, petitioner Sun's Property Holdings LLC.
Bill Number 4122 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That completes first readings for this evening. Next are salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 3022?
In ordinance amending, ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022, petitioner auditor.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill Number 3022 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Murphy?
John Murphy, Chief Deputy Auditor with offices on the second floor. This is a reorganization of a few positions in the auditor's office. We've had a grant accountant position that's been open all year, unable to fill that, so we're eliminating that position. We're adding a senior property tax specialist position as backup for Kathy Gregorich, who does the property tax settlement for all the units in the county, and to kind of learn some of that part of the office. And we're increasing, reorganizing the payroll administrator position with a small pay increase. For 2022, there's no, it's a budget-neutral item because the grant accountant position has been vacant so far. For 2023 and going forward, it adds to the budget about $7,000 per year. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? From Mr. Murphy? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 3022. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 3022. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill Number 3022 was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 3022? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Councilman Fig?
Yes.
Sounds good to say that. Welcome.
Thank you.
Councilman Katanzright?
Yes.
Councilman Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 3022 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, Bill Number 3122?
In ordinance amending, ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022, petitioner election board.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill Number 3122 comes to the full council without recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Frida Glenn, St. Joseph Circuit Court Clerk, located in several different areas, mostly at 101 South Main, South Bend. I'm going to refer to Lana, who has prepared all the numbers.
Hi, Lana Cleary, Clerk's Office, with the offices of 101 South Main Street in the basement. We come to the council with a revised appropriation request of the council to increase the salaries of, first and foremost, the poll workers that work in the elections, also the absentee workers, central count clerks, and voting machine technicians. I sent that in for review, and I don't know if you've had a chance. We put a little bit more emphasis on inspectors of all the poll workers because they are required to know a lot more about the election laws and also election procedures, especially on Election Day. Want to know if the council had any questions for us? Had a chance to review it?
Any questions from council on the amendment or the revisions?
Yeah, just that I did have a chance to review them, and thank you for taking a look at it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If I may add, there was also a late letter that came from the co-chair of the Democratic Party. I tried to get vice chair.
The vice chair?
Excuse me, the vice chair, excuse me. The vice chair, that was also sent. Kind of came late to us. I sent it as soon as I got it.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Kanarecki?
Thank you. Could you just remind us of the other contractual services? There's a pretty big reduction there in between the two.
We reduced, in other contractual services besides our contractual obligations to our election vendors, RBM and No Ink, which do the election equipment and the pole pads, the vote, vote machine technicians are paid out of that. So we reduced, we backed back down. We originally asked to take, like, the vote machine technicians from $20 to $40 an hour. So we backed that back down to $30 an hour, and the supervisor from 50 to 40. So with some of those reductions, it greatly, like, reduced the cost of that, I guess, because that's, they're paid out of other contractual services.
Got you. Good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council for the petitioner? Mr. Katanzright?
Not related to this bill, but related to the election board. Can you just give us a quick update, Rita, since you're here, as to the early voting? And when that's going to begin? For people that are here in the audience who might want to know that, and with this last round of filings, how that's going to do in terms of printing ballots?
Well, we had a challenge that was filed today, so they have until tomorrow to file. Anybody has an additional challenge that can be filed, is tomorrow. That deadline takes us to a hearing on Monday, or, excuse me, on Friday. And after the hearing on Friday, we have to make sure all the ballots are proofed and have them to the parties by Monday, and then start mailing them out and printing on Tuesday. And then they have to be out in the mail no later than Saturday. So we are under a very stressful time constraint in the clerk's office, but I'm very proud to say that the girls have been working very diligently to start proofing whatever we can do, and we are trying to make sure that all obligations to our vendors are filled because they have state regulations and federal regulations that they also have to follow. So we're moving in the right direction. It's just a lot.
Thank you to you and your staff, and everybody who's doing all they can to help
Thank you.
make this election go off without a hitch. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 3122. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
I'm Amy Drake from Granger. I wanted to be here tonight to advocate for pay increases for the people that run our elections. These Americans care about free and fair elections, and they want to be part of that process. They are doing their civic duty, putting their country first, working long hours, all to ensure that our election results are accurate and trustworthy. These workers are due a pay increase. We need to honor their commitment and pay them appropriately a decent living wage. Considering other county workers recently received pay increases, including both the commissioners and this council, I think a pay raise for election workers is a matter of fairness. As government officials, I hope you will understand the importance of paying these workers the rates that they deserve. By paying appropriate wages, we help to attract strong candidates for the positions. Qualified people help to ensure more smooth, effective, and accurate voting processes for us all. In this case, it doesn't pay to be cheap. We need to pay a wage that will ensure voting results that we can trust. Last September, chairs from both the local Republican and Democratic Parties agreed that we needed to pay our poll workers better. This is without a doubt a bipartisan issue that both sides understand is important. I urge you today to do your patriotic duty and increase the pay for these workers who help ensure the integrity of our elections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Dieter, 1740 Portage Avenue, 46616, St. Joe County Commissioner, District 2. It's not necessarily voting, I'm in favor of it, but I just have a question of Rita, if I could ask her about that? During, okay, during the process of all this redistricting and maps, did either party come to you and ask the burden it would cause on your office during that process?
I was not approached from the beginning.
Ever approached?
Ever.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Grabel. I have offices at 1650 South Bend Avenue in South Bend. I'm here to speak in favor of the bill, and in fact, to ask that you consider giving more money to the frontline poll workers. I would note, my children have all worked in this position over the past 10 years, and it's typically a 13 or a 14-hour day, not a 10-hour day. And so $150 may not seem like, may seem like a large raise over the 90, but they were actually working for significantly less than the federal minimum wage. And what we're proposing to pay them now, based on this ordinance, I believe, would be $11.50 an hour. I can tell you that starting wages at Chick-fil-A are $16 an hour, and this is far more demanding and important work, and it's one or two days out of the year. So I encourage you to support this bill. I further challenge you to increase the pay, in particular for those workers working on Election Day. They were on the front lines of COVID this last go-around, and a lot of them were doing it for $90 for a 14-hour day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Carl Baxmeyer, 17711 Woodbridge, South Bend, Indiana. I too would like to speak in favor of your passage of the new salaries for the Election Day workers. These folks, as was said, work 14 hours a day for less than minimum wage, and that's just not a fair wage and way to be treated. If we don't pass this, if you don't pass this, what are we saying to the Election Day workers? That we don't value the contribution that they make to the process? We know we do, and you can demonstrate that by increasing their pay. As a former county chairman, I can speak firsthand how hard it is for both parties to get good people to come out, give up their time and effort, and work on Election Day. So I would urge you to please vote yes on this amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 3122. May I have a motion to amend Bill 3122?
Move.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill Number 3122 is amended. May I have a motion on Bill 3122 as amended? Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill Number 3122 as amended was made by Councilman Kanarecki. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Are there any further comments from any council member on 3122 as amended? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 3122 as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 3222?
In ordinance amending, ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022, petitioner Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Amy Rupee, Administrator for the Department of Health, with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building, and we are requesting an appropriation for two staff members, moving them from Fund 9164, which is our COVID insurance reimbursement fund, to our county health fund.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill 3222. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed, so I hear a motion on Bill 3222. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill Number 3222 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Kanarecki. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 3222 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, Bill Number 3322?
In ordinance amending, ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022, petitioner prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes. Bob Risenhoover Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th and 6th floor of this building. We're here requesting an appropriation and salary ordinance for the prosecutor's pretrial diversion fund. The fund number is 7398, and this is to keep the commanders at the same salary levels that they were last year. We're asking these funds be made available retro to 1122. Currently, in the pretrial diversion, there's $274,000. We're forecasting for year-end to be $275,000.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill 3322. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
I just, Derek Dieter, 1740 Portage, I have another question, if that's okay with the council? Yes or no?
Go ahead.
Okay. The commanders, you said, are getting a raise?
Yes, sir.
And those were the commanders that were in the homicide unit?
Yes.
What do they do now?
They're investigators for the prosecutor.
Okay, but what do they do?
They investigate crimes.
Okay, so they're not assigned to any, to family violence or anything?
No, no. They basically handle the felony cases upstairs on the 10th floor.
Okay, so they're not assigned to any specific?
No.
Okay.
To really put where Mr. Cotter feels he needs it.
I'll get with him. Thanks.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 3322. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill Number 3322 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council?
Okay.
Member of this bill?
I didn't, okay, well, yeah.
Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 3322 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 3422?
In ordinance amending, ordinance 7620, the same being ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022, petitioner prosecutor.
Yes, Bob Risenhoover Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building.
One second. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Slow down, Bob. This comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Risenhoover, go ahead, sir.
You'd think after 14 years I'd know this procedure. Anyway, Bob Risenhoover Prosecutor's Office, we're here requesting appropriation for the interlocal agreement with the City of South Bend, with Mishawaka, and with the Commissioners, Board of Commissioners for St. Joe County, and the Prosecutor's Office. This is to reestablish the Special Victims Unit for St. Joe County.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill 3422. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 3422? Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill Number 3422 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Kanarecki. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 3422 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 3522?
In ordinance amending, ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022, petitioner prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Bob Risenhoover Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. This is a request for appropriation and salary amendment for a paralegal position with the prosecutor. This is the person that will edit and produce the digital files that's used in body cams and car cams. This all has to be done to turn over to the defense attorneys, and right now, everything they do has to be edited and produced. Current staffing is just not able to handle the workload. This will be paid from pretrial diversion from the prosecutor, salary and fringe.
Any questions from Mr. Risenhoover from council? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Bill 3522. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on the public hearing on 3522 is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill Number 3522 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on this bill?
Yeah, got it.
Mr. Nolan?
Mr. Risenhoover, just to be clear, when you mentioned the proposed, or the expected budget, the pretrial diversion, you were including this position?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 3522 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 3722?
In ordinance amending, ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022, petitioner prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Bob Risenhoover Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here tonight asking for appropriation and salary amendment for the APS salaried people, the investigators. They were awarded an additional grant of $28,200 for COVID work. They all worked during the COVID pandemic. They have not received any additional hazard pay.
Any questions from council from Mr. Risenhoover?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
Mr. Risenhoover, would you remind us how many investigators that is and how many counties they cover besides St. Joseph County?
St. Joseph County is a hub for four other counties.
Four additional counties?
Yes.
So five counties are covered?
No, for three additional, a hub of four. A total of four. And this covers eight people. There's nine people on the staff there, but one of them is data entry, and they did not go in the field, so they're not getting the extra money.
Any other questions from council?
From my experience, they do-
I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay. They do a phenomenal job.
They do. APS employees. Good group of people.
They do a good job, and they often do tough work. They do, they do a good job and they often do tough work.
We had, uh, quite a large amount of, uh, hazard pay last year. Why wasn't this taken care of last year?
Prosecutor elected not to do it. It was Ken Cotter's decision that, uh, he was not going to do it at that time.
This comes from general taxpayer money?
No, this is APS grant.
So it's a grant money?
Yes.
So it doesn't affect our taxpayers?
No.
You have no idea why they didn't do it last year when other people were doing it?
No.
I don't have any idea either.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill thirty-seven twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on the public hearing on thirty-seven twenty-two is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number thirty-seven twenty-two is made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
I'm voting aye because it's not taxpayer money, but it's coming from another source.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number thirty-seven twenty-two is passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
Roger Chris, five four five nine one Maple Lane Avenue. I've been looking into the departments of the county and, uh, approximately sixty-four percent of taxpayer dollars go towards employees and/or benefits for the government entities that work for Saint Joseph County. And I feel like that's quite a bit of money spent on benefits, perks. There's probably more than I've actually really analyzed, but that's just my, my feeling on that. Um, the slice of the pie gets bigger and bigger for the government and it doesn't get utilized for the citizens.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing on public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill number twenty-nine twenty-two?
An ordinance appropriating and transferring monies.
Yes.
The purpose here is specified for the several departments here enlisted in Saint Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill twenty-nine twenty-two?
President Morton, don't we have to make a amendment on B, the dollar amount?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You do, yes.
I'm sorry.
That should be three hundred and eleven thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
How much?
Three hundred and eleven thousand one forty.
Okay.
And also D was removed by the petitioner at last at the committee meeting, so you can eliminate D.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
I make a motion that we amend Bill twenty-nine twenty-two to show that item B, the total amount should be three hundred and eleven thousand dollars one hundred and forty, with the appropriate, um, individual categories arranged as was proposed and given to us by the clerk of the circuit court. And also I move that we remove item D as in David.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? A motion and a second has been made to amend, uh, based upon the difference in the dollar amount in elimination of D. So may I have a motion on Bill number twenty-nine twenty-two as amended?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number twenty-nine twenty-two as amended was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments on Bill twenty-nine twenty-two as amended? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number twenty-nine twenty-two as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have a public hearing and public comment on American Rescue Plan Fund. Clerk, will you please read Bill number thirty-six twenty-two?
An ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-two, petitioner portage manager.
Thank you. Ms. Hess, committee report please.
Mr. President, Bill number thirty-six twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Uh, good evening, folks. Mikey B. Portage Manor, offices at thirty sixteen Portage Avenue in South Bend. At the last meeting, you sent this with a favorable recommendation. This is money out of the American Rescue Plan to pay for our staff members who staffed our COVID unit during our most recent outbreak. Earlier this year, we had approximately twenty-four residents come down with COVID over about a two-month stretch. So, and again, this does not, uh, come out of our Portage Manor Fund or the General Fund. This is from the American Rescue Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Eby. Thank you, Mr. Eby. Any questions from council from Mr. Eby? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill thirty-six twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none will close the public hearing on thirty-six twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number thirty-six twenty-two was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Hess, any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Let the record show that Bill number thirty-six twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, land use planning. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one dash twenty-two?
Saint Joseph County Public Nuisance Ordinance, petitioner here, Plan Commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number one dash twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Bill number one twenty-two needs to be amended. Ms. Wiles?
All right. Uh, I will just run through the highlights of public outreach and then I'll cover the major changes, uh, in each of, of the three ordinances since we began public comment to now. Sorry, again, Abby Wiles, Area Plan Commission Director and tasked with code enforcement for Saint Joe County. So we have three ordinances proposed, uh, tonight. The first is public nuisance, abandoned vehicles, and then weed and rank vegetation. As an overview of public outreach, we did four public meetings. We did online engagement, social media posts, uh, information on our website, and a number of communications with the public. Of, uh, the public meetings, we held four total. The first was, I believe, excuse me, January twelfth at the IBEW, we had fifteen in attendance and a nice, uh, coverage, uh, from the South Bend Tribune. January nineteenth at the Palmer Community Complex, twenty-one folks were at that meeting. January twenty-sixth at German Township, twenty-three total. And then on February ninth, we had our Zoom meeting and nine folks in attendance there. Social media posts went on throughout the public outreach process from when we introduced the, uh, ordinances to you at the meeting in January until we cut off public comment on February, February eighteenth. We even did a seventy-five-dollar sponsored Facebook post which reached eight thousand forty-eight people and had, uh, an additional outreach post engagement of approximately eighteen hundred. All public comments that were received were compiled into a comment matrix and we provided a response to every single comment that we received. Those were posted to the website last week and provided to you at the committee meeting. Uh, we received a total of sixty-three comments through the website and through our public meetings. We received a number of comments specifically related to weed and rank vegetation from several environmental groups, and as a result, we met with a number of, uh, groups and individuals on those. On February fourteenth, we met with the Indiana DNR, Jessica Merkling. On February twenty-third, we met with Steve Sasse of Indiana Nature, and on February twenty-fifth, I consulted Evy Kirkwood, our former, uh, director of Saint Joe County Parks, who's here today. Uh, so just an overview of the stats. Four public meetings, seventy-one total attendance, sixty-three public comments, six news stories, seven separate Facebook posts, which resulted in over eight thousand people being reached on Facebook on this. And an individual meetings with the DNR, Indiana Nature, consultation with Evy Kirkwood, and then a response to every public comment received, uh, in the public meetings and on the website in the comment matrix that's online for everyone to go and read. So I'll just roll into the first ordinance that's on your agenda, public nuisance. I'm not going to cover everything. I'm just going to cover the big changes that we made from when we started the public comment till now. So in the definition section of public nuisance, we added language, uh, in regulated drain or urban drain per comments from Drainage Board staff. Uh, we heard from a number of environmental groups that, uh, they were afraid that the public nuisance ordinance would create issues for their composting piles. We specifically added an exception for that. And we are also only regulating log piles or other tree parts in the front yard, not in all yards. And just to reiterate, all of these changes were made really, uh, well, with the exception of the first from the Drainage Board staff, the other two were made per public comments. Other major, major changes included clarification that under the violation notice section, a landowner may contact staff to propose a plan of action to bring the property into compliance, uh, as opposed to just having ten days to comply. You have ten days to either comply or contact us with a plan of action. We also clarified the notification process for hain tags because we are planning to utilize those. And clarified that any penalties, uh, that would be assessed would be specifically for repeat offenders, so, uh, we couldn't come out and, and cite you from the onset. And any penalties collected would be applied to abatement costs incurred. So that is public nuisance. I'm not sure if you want to take, my understanding is you want to take action on public nuisance and then we can, or I mean, do the public-
Yes, one at a time.
-hearing and, and then I'll, I'll just step aside and cover any questions you have in regards to that ordinance.
Okay, so those, you covered all the proposed changes in, on one twenty-two?
All the major changes. There, you'll see some other, um, I'd say, housekeeping type changes. They're all in the redline versions that were emailed to you last week and posted to the website.
Okay.
But these are like the major changes that we made from starting public comment.
Okay. May I have a motion to amend Bill number one twenty-two as read?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to amend Bill number one twenty-two as read. The proposed amendment now becomes part of the public hearing on the bill. With that said, any questions from the petitioner on one twenty-two?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
Just have Ms. Wiles just remind us and the audience too, um, and those listening online that the impetus for code enforcement in Saint Joe County is long overdue. I think all of us would agree on that. Um, many of us would agree on that. It's got to be complaint-based. Is that right, Ms. Wiles? We, we are going to have code enforcement officers out there looking for code violations because we're probably anticipating there's going to be enough-
Yeah, that's correct.
Complaint initiated request for the act on. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just glancing back to Steve Sade and Savannah Fletcher, our two coenforcement inspectors. They've been, uh, since we brought them on staff late January, uh, out visiting all the backlog of complaints, complaints that we have. Not going out to drum up complaints and look for problems, uh, really with a staff of two inspectors being overseen by myself, we, we won't have the capacity to go out and investigate things that we don't receive a complaint for.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill one twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Hello, my name is Christine Galvis and I live at one seven eight three seven Bridgeview Drive in South Bend. And I would like to, um, if you don't mind, speak to all three because it's all kind of intertwined to me and it's not going to be very long at all. Is that okay? All right. I would like to thank Abby Wiles and Steve Sade and whoever else is involved and is responsible for getting these ordinances together in the county to make Saint Joe County a better place. Steve has answered many of my questions on a regular basis and I've really appreciated that. I would also like to thank Ken Doddle and Jessica Merkling from the Indiana Department Natural Resources because I also questioned both of them on certain things. I am in favor of the county council passing each of these three proposed ordinances so Saint Joseph County can start getting cleaned up. I live in a subdivision and I've never lived in a subdivision that has had this many problems or what I consider violations. It's sad to see the violations at the houses in subdivisions that lower our property values. If I put my house up for sale right now, prospective buyers would question certain surrounding property appearances. In the future, I would like to see the amendments to the public nuisance and weed and rank vegetation ordinances that would cover an entire property, including the site and back, not just the front yard. If a property owner doesn't take care of the front yard, how are they going to take care of the, the back and the sides when people won't see it as much? We don't have alleys in subdivisions in the counties, so our backyards all back up to each other. And you, I look at other people's stuff that are in my backyards. Regarding the abandoned vehicles, in the future, I would like to see this proposed ordinance amended or another ordinance created to cover the amount of vehicles, trailers, boats, et cetera, that are kept on a property in a subdivision and how long they can be on that property. Some properties look like storage yards. Just because a vehicle or several vehicles on a property don't look like they're abandoned vehicles, that doesn't mean they can move, especially if the vehicles were pushed or pulled into the property. May I make a comment or just a couple of sentences about the anonymous, uh, turning in violations? Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. Steve and I have talked about this too. If a person submits a violation from form reporting a neighbor, it is scary. I turned in an anonymous letter regarding a neighbor in Elkhart County for the property that we had some years ago. And it was regarding the whole yard that had violations that had been on the yard for over a year. When I called, and I did it by letter originally anonymously, when I called Elkhart County and asked if they received the letter, they said yes, but would not do anything about any anonymous violation report. So I reluctantly gave my name and information. Most of the violations were cleaned up under the Elkhart County's guidance. The neighbor did yell at me, um, for turning him in and he scared me, but I felt it was the right thing to do to get the property cleaned up. And I have a question. Will names of the people submitting the violation order be private? Or would they, would the name be provided to the property owner of the violation? And will this be covered under the Freedom of Information Act where it has to be turned over to the property owner? And you don't have to answer that now, but I just wanted my opinion heard. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of Bill one twenty-two?
I don't have a question. I do not. Derek Dieter seventeen forty Portage Avenue. Um, fully in support of this, I'd like to thank Abby and Brandy, the attorney. Put a lot of work in there. Also, Councilman Krasinski, who came out with myself, and actually Frank Fotia also, from the Commissioner's Office. Good bless you to do all the, the, lay the groundwork for all this. As you all know, this has been an issue that you guys have kicked around for a long, long time, so finally we're going to start it. Um, so I commend hopefully a positive vote for that. It's going to be a very in-depth process that's going, but the, my twelve years in city government and my short tenure here so far, I've never seen a more aggressive and information-filled packet and thing that these people have done going out in the community. Every single person who commented either in person, online, call, was documented and they were provided an answer. So I think it's a very, very intense job to begin with, but everything they did, the two people that we've hired are very qualified to do what they want to do in our community, so I think it's going to be a very successful venture as we go, and I anticipate this is going to be adding on to people as we go, because I think the immense land of Saint Joe County and starting with two people, I'm sure their, their paperwork is going to be stacked up right out of the gate. Um, you all have driven by Darden Road across from Isaac Walton. There's the poster child for what we want to start cleaning up. And dozens and dozens of stuff we see already. So again, I hope- So again, I hope you vote in favor of it, but I commend everybody that put in the hard work to get this thing started.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of Bill 122? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of Bill 122? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 122. An amendment to Bill Number 122 has been moved and seconded. All in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill Number 122 is amended. May I have a motion on Bill 122 as amended?
Mr. President.
Ms. Katariki?
Thank you. Just a quick question, I'm not sure if council would have an answer to this, or Abby, just in regards to the Freedom of Information Act request, would that apply to anonymous submissions of complaints?
Brandy Eckert, I'm a deputy county attorney, I work at 420 Lincoln Way, West Mishawaka. Yes, the Access to Public Records Act would apply to complaints that are submitted in this process, they are not law enforcement records, which would be protected. It was not, in my opinion, a good idea to accept entirely anonymous complaints, just for investigation purposes, it would be much harder to follow up with a complainant if there was no contact information. I did say that I think that it could be limited to providing an email, or a phone number, or something, so if somebody wanted to, say, make a burner email account and put that in, they could. But that would be my recommendation, would be not entirely anonymous, but some contact information would be required.
Got you. Thank you.
But, and I'm just making this comment based upon questions and comments that have come to me, not only now but in the past, and just like the lady said earlier, there's a lot of apprehension to make these complaints in some cases. So just say a person is very apprehensive again to make a complaint and even, you know, do an email address or anything like that, couldn't that person just call and follow up on that complaint?
If they submitted an anonymous complaint-
Yes.
...and then followed up later with a phone call-
Yes.
-at that point, they were, the investigators would at least be able to get more information from the person on the phone, so that, I think that would be a little bit more acceptable, but obviously-
Okay.
...the phone call would be logged, and whatever information that came in on the caller ID would probably be noted in the file.
Well, and I'm saying just, you know, that situation when they are very scared, apprehensive of the person that they're complaining on, so if they call in to his office, that person's still not going to know that, or am I looking at this wrong?
Well, if somebody calls in, you would have to note in the file, you know, we received a phone call on this complaint following up on a previous anonymous complaint related to, and then we collected X information.
But that information would not be given to the person that they're complaining on.
If it was noted in the file that there was a phone call that came in, which it should be, that would be the proper procedure, then the fact that a phone call had been made, and whatever information they collected on the phone call that got noted in the file would be included in the record, whether that information was somebody's full name, an address, or just whatever they happened to give them on the phone, I don't know what that would be.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments from any council member on 122? An amendment to Bill Number 122 has been moved and seconded. All in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. May I have a motion on 122? Bill 122 as amended?
Approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 122 as amended was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments on 122 as amended? Hearing a clerk please take the roll. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Tansrite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Let the record show that Bill Number 122 as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 2-22?
Ordinance providing for the removal and disposal of abandoned vehicles and enforcement of Indiana Code 9-22-1 for the San Joseph County Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth within the unincorporated areas of San Joseph County, and creating a fund for the purpose of implementing the provisions of this ordinance, petitioner area plan commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report please.
Mr. President, Bill Number 2-22 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Bill Number 222 needs to be amended. Ms. Wiles, will you go over the proposed amendment?
Major change, Abby Wiles, area plan commission director. Major changes to abandoned vehicle include added additional definition of vehicle, for greater clarity, we had abandoned vehicle, now we added vehicle to make sure that there's the connection. And then the procedure, as we did with public nuisance, clarified notification process for hain tags, and that's pretty much it for abandoned vehicle.
Thank you. May I have a motion to amend Bill Number 222 as read?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second to amend Bill Number 222 as read. This proposed amendment now becomes part of the public hearing on the bill. Any questions from council for Ms. Wiles at this point?
Not a question, Mr. President, but I would like to congratulate and thank Abby for the enormity of your overachievement over all this, fabulous job.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none?
I would just, I'd like to add to that, I think, one thing that always helps us a lot in government is if we have outstanding staff work on these items, and that's, we've had in this case, and I think it's done us all a lot of good. Thank you so much.
Well, since we're doing them now, I'd like to thank Commissioner Dieter and all of us up here, the county council, and Abby and her staff, especially Steve and Shannon in the back, and Brandy for all their long hours, and Commissioner Dieter was right, it would seem like we were on an aggressive pace, I think we were on a laser pace to get this done. And again, I can't thank everyone involved on this process, because I know Abby put in a lot of hours, and long overdue, and again, I want to thank the council for their work, and Mr. Morton, and your leadership towards this also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Katanzrite?
I also might want to remind, you know, everybody that's here, that we haven't had this issue fallen deaf here, as we've been looking at it for several years.
Several.
The problem was, before, there was a much higher proposal, which was much more costly, which, at that time, we weren't in a position to be able to fund as a county. With Abby's hard work and her staff, everybody involved, she brought us a proposal that was much more reasonable, much more affordable, and I think just the very transparent process she went through to make it happen made it very palatable to everybody, and it didn't seem like a big overreach to, you know, for government to create a code enforcement division for the unincorporated portion of the county, so I commend Abby and her staff, and look forward to working with them and making our quality of place better in San Jo County.
I think so.
Ms. Krasinski?
I left one person out, he's sitting back there in the corner there quietly, but Frank Fotia had a lot to do with this also, setting up meetings and these public meetings, and forgot to mention you Frank, but thank you for all your hard work also.
Any other comments from council on 222? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill Number 222. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and the record, your name and address for the record, please.
Rhonda Chris, 54591 Maple Lane Avenue, South Bend, 46635. The consequences of code enforcement have raised concern. I'm going to focus on the implications this may cause. Homeowners who do not keep the yard maintained, turn it into a junkyard or a dump, more than likely are suffering from mental illness, disability, old age, depression, or hopelessness, or a combination. More than likely, they are under financial constraints. Let's look at a few scenarios. Code steps in, hefty fines, hefty fees imposed to homeowners tax bill. Owner is probably struggling to stay out of poverty, likely will not have the money to pay. A mentally unstable person who is in the threshold of insanity, now under duress, snaps and go insane, perhaps looking to seek vengeance, retaliation, rob, steal, to get out of desperation, or worse, hurt people. There are three hundred and ninety-five square miles to the unincorporated county. The sheriff's office is understaffed by eight. Officers in South Bend are down thirty, and twenty-seven guards down in the jail. Will the homeowner go to jail for losing it? Who do you think will pay for that? We will. Maybe they hang on by a thread, but now they cannot afford to pay the fines for that. Three missed installments, property goes to tax sale. They can redeem it, but not without additional fees and fines plus interest, more than likely they will not. Fees get into a couple of thousand dollars, who pays for that? More than likely taxpayer. Homeowner is now homeless, they go to the shelter, who pays for that? We will. Code enforcement condemns a house, they bulldoze it down. They will never collect from a broken-down person, and the taxpayers will pay the bill. I would rather put up with a few eyesores than to be governed by the county. I moved into another state and still own my property in San Joseph County. I am now on a one-acre parcel surrounded by farmland and one neighbor adjacent. I moved in thinking I would not have to put up with the nonsense that my property in San Jo offered. I was wrong. The neighbor's company parked in my yard, I told him it was rude. He retaliated. I received a letter from code enforcement. I am in Timbuktu and told to remove obnoxious weeds, or they will come onto my land and remove dead weeds. To me, this is trespassing. Every unincorporated resident should have been given notice to this ordinance via mail. My other, I'll leave that for later, the second one. So that's what I have to say about that.
Ma'am, just for clarification, we are calling for people that are speaking in favor of this bill at this point. I just wanted to have that on the record, but I do appreciate your comments.
Okay, I guess I missed that, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of Bill Number 222? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of 222?
Do I have to repeat it?
No, no.
Thank you.
No. I think we got it. The public hearing is now closed on Bill Number 222. Ms. Wiles, you have three minutes to, if you'd like to rebut any of the comments that the woman made in opposition.
Brandy Eckert, deputy county attorney, specifically with regards to the comments about how fines and fees and stuff are going to be collected, it's a little different depending on what ordinance you're talking about. With this one specifically, the abandoned vehicle, it's not something that would go on the tax bill. There are no fines in the abandoned vehicle ordinance either for, at any point in the enforcement stage for the abandoned vehicle ordinance, so those particular concerns would not be related to this specific ordinance. The previous public nuisance ordinance that was just passed does have a certain number of fines, but they only kick in after the third, or after the first abatement has already been completed, so it would only be for repeat offenders, and the fine amounts are not very large. It would be one hundred for the first violation post-abatement, two hundred for the second, and five hundred for the third, and beyond a third, there are no more fines after that. And again, that one does not go on the tax bill, it is just collected through lawsuits if the county were to move forward with that. And then the weed and rank vegetation one, that one, again, has the same fine structure as the public nuisance, so there's only the three opportunities for fines, and only after there's already been one abatement action, and the fees and fines can be collected via lawsuit, but this one is structured because state law allowed it to be included on the tax bill if it's not paid. So this one specifically does have that piece in it, because the state allowed the county to go ahead and do that specifically with this one, and it was the most efficient way to go about recouping mowing costs specifically. So if you have any further questions on that, I can answer that, but generally, that's how that works.
Thank you very much. An amendment to Bill Number 2-22 has been moved and seconded. All in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill Number 2-22 is amended. May I have a motion on Bill 222 as amended?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 2-22 as amended was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilman Katanzrite. Any further comments from any council member on 222? Ms. Katariki?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Wiles, just briefly, in my time in Mishawaka dealing with municipal code, occasionally if people were found to potentially not have the means to abate an issue, there would be maybe not a formal list, but a list of nonprofits, or even those looking for community service hours, that could be referred to those people. Is there any talk or intention of doing anything like that here?
So, as I mentioned previously, we clarified, and I guess, I'll answer that question, this is abandoned vehicle right now, but-
Yeah, I was going to speak more briefly to, yeah, or more generally, rather.
We have a philosophy of compliance, I'll say. This isn't, and this has been stated at public meetings throughout and during the process, but this is by no means a moneymaker, this isn't us coming out to cite you. The goal here is compliance, and I'm really excited to have brought on the two inspectors that we brought on, because I believe that they share that philosophy, and I also believe that you all and Commissioner Dieter, who's been pushing the program, do as well. So, as I mentioned previously, for public nuisance, we specifically revised the ordinance to state that they don't have ten days, that they have ten days to bring the property into compliance, or to contact us. And perhaps we do need to work on putting some kind of resource guide together. I'm aware of some of the organizations that you're referring to. I know there are a number of organizations that will do, like owner-occupied, or repairs for owner-occupied structures. We don't have any building code-related ordinances here, we have abandoned vehicle, grass, and then public nuisance, but still, if there are organizations that address those needs, or that can help folks address those needs, you know, we can put together a resource list that we can pass out. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah, yeah, it just might be valuable to help out some of the, you know, seniors or people of limited means, just have, just a guide of maybe some volunteer services or something, yeah, thank you.
Any other comments from council on 222? Hearing a clerk please take the roll. Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Katanzrite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Let the record show that Bill Number 222 as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 322?
San Jose County Weed and Rank Vegetation Control Ordinance, Petitioner Area Plan Commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report.
Mr. President, Bill Number 3-22 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Bill Number 322 also needs to be amended. Ms. Wiles, will you please go through the proposed amendment?
Sure. So of the three ordinances, admittedly, this is the one that got the most revisions, and I anticipate that we might have a few folks here tonight to speak on that. The major changes included really a complete rewrite of the definition of weed and rank vegetation, and a complete rewrite of the exceptions in the ordinance. So just for clarity, and because it's my understanding that we have a lot of folks that are interested in this, I want to clarify what the new definition is. Weeds and other ranked vegetation shall mean un- Weeds and other ranked vegetation shall mean unmaintained and non-cultivated grasses, forbs, vines, shrubs exceeding the height of nine inches located in a minimum front yard or in the buildable area of a lot located in a primary building and minimum front yard. So nine inches is what we started with and that's what we've settled on. There have been a number of questions that came up during public comment. Well, why nine inches? Elkert County uses eight. We chose nine to be consistent with jurisdictions in St. Joe County, so there wasn't confusion. We changed weed and rank vegetation to only refer to front yard based on input that we received from environmental groups, but also our capacity to enforce and targeting the real issues at hand. Other major changes to the definition of weed and rank vegetation included a much expanded list of exceptions to the ordinance. So for the purpose of the ordinance, the following are not to be considered weed or other ranked vegetation. So these would be exceptions to the definition of weed and rank vegetation. Areas of maintained landscaping which have been planted or cultivated by the owner occupant of the property. Agricultural and food crops. Filter or buffer strips within riparian zones and edges of ponds or lakes within 30 feet of water's edge. Vegetation within a wetland recognized by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife National Wetlands Inventory. Rain gardens, pollinators, and other cultivated native plant gardens and naturalized wooded areas. So these changes came about to promote naturalized lands, allow people the ability to have flexibility in doing a naturalized yard and to have their yards planted with native species. And then just to clarify, you know, where we got a lot of this language, we met again with Jessica Merkling from the DNR, Steve Sasse with Indiana Nature, and then consulted with Evy Kirkwood, the former Director of Sancho County Parks, on this language. Okay. Changes to section six violation notice, as we did throughout the other, throughout all of the ordinances, we clarified the notification for cane tags because we're going to use those. Clarified penalties for non-compliance will pertain to repeat offenders, as Brandy said about public nuisance ordinance, and that any penalties collected shall be applied to any abatement costs incurred. So penalties would go toward the work that's being performed to bring the property into compliance. All right. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, any questions from council for Ms. Wiles? Thank you. May I have a motion to amend bill 3-22 as read?
Oble.
May I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to amend bill 3-22 as read. The proposed amendment now becomes part of the public hearing on the bill. Again, any questions from council from Ms. Wiles at this point?
Mr. Morton.
Just Katanzright.
I need you to explain to us something I forgot from committee. When do you plan on, when is the kickoff for this going to be? Was it April or, I forgot, or is it when the commissioners pass it?
April 1st is when enforcement would begin. Just as a side note, so when we can begin enforcement, April 1st, we will still need to go through a procurement process for all the services related to the implementation of the program. So mowing contractors, cleanup contractors, towing contractors, that process all still needs to take place.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Ms. Krasinski?
And Abby, and I'm pretty sure the commissioners have that on their agenda already.
Get through tonight and then that's my next thing that we're going to work on. Yes.
We'll see if Commissioner Dieter can't get that done.
We're in the process of drafting the request for proposals for all those services. So get through tonight, get the ordinances in place, and then move forward with all of the services related to the program.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Thank you.
As long as there's no mess.
Commissioner Dieter.
Krasinski.
Mr. Katanzright?
Mr. Dieter, could you come up? I have a question for you. You've been asking some questions tonight, so I got one for you.
All right, wait.
So Ms. Chris has alluded to the possibility of somebody having mental illness and creating a police matter out of a code enforcement issue. I can't recall of any, you know, living in the city my entire life, the city of South Bend, but with your 40 years in law enforcement, 40-plus years in law enforcement.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. I don't want to be incorrect. And you were on the SWAT team, weren't you, many of those years?
Twenty years.
Twenty. Do you recall any SWAT incident or major crisis that occurred over a code enforcement issue in the city?
No, but there'll be a provision because we have two very good people working. And again, this is not an aggressive style. We're coming in bulldozing your house. I'm sure our people who have been with city code for a long time and a county police officer, that they're able to recognize if somebody needs some help. And that'll be the process that we'll go into, talking to people, you know, if there's an issue with possibly dimension and things, we'll attempt to find family members. So again, Abby and Brandy have worked very hard of finding the provisions. When we're talking to people, they will be able to recognize the issue at hand. And it may be somebody who doesn't have the physical capability of cutting the grass, moving the cars, moving wood, property, whatever. So every instance is going to be different. So again, we're very lucky to get two very experienced people that when they go out, it's not going to be we're coming out and get your stuff cleaned. It's what do we need to do to help you facilitate getting your stuff up to code? Thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions from council or comments?
At this time, that'll be it.
Hearing none will open the public hearing on bill number 322. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, hi, this is Steve Francis, 54174 G. Lake Drive. I generally support this and thank everybody who was involved. And I was involved in some of the major changes to this particular ordinance on weed and ranked vegetation. And I really appreciate the open transparent process that was conducted by Abby and her staff and the council being open to changes because, you know, some really major changes were made to improve this particular ordinance, particularly for, you know, those who want to cultivate pollinator gardens, rain gardens, other types of landscaping that is actually better environmentally and for our health than over fertilized lawns. And yet it still, you know, would provide for cleanup if it got out of hand for folks. So I much appreciate Abby's willingness to conduct this process and for the changes that were sincerely made as a result of that public comment process and to my council member, Corey Nolan, who also helped us get some of our ideas across. So thanks very much and support the ordinance and hope that you all vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of bill number 322? Hearing none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bill 322?
I would like to.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Rhonda Chris, 54591 Maple Lane Avenue. My research shows that as of 3/9/2022, the DNR reports that we have approximately 156 endangered or threatened rare species, 100 of which are plants and perhaps so-called weeds. I highly suspect that the people that go out to cut will not be botanists. Take away food sources for birds, nature, there will probably be more extinction, sorry, extension, I'm transposing, extinction. There are also 23 birds on the list as well as fish, mammals, and other species that are about to come extinct. I read years back that the monarch butterfly is going extinct for the lack of food, also known as milkweed. Ordinances like this will start killing ecosystems and we will lose many more species of wildlife and plants. Just remember, it's not nice to fool Mother Nature, and the Bible teaches us that a person that offends you, you should go to that person. Are we laughing at me?
No, ma'am. Not at all. Not at all, ma'am. It was, no, it was a cough, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I will ask permission to cough next time.
Well, if I wasn't reading off my notes, I would have been able to see the expression on your face. I've seen you guys laughing at other people in movies. Compliance, anarchy, and money are all that you seek from the people. End of statement.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition of bill 322? Hearing none, close to public hearing on the bill. Petitioner, if you would, it's your call if you would like to rebut on any of the comments that were made in opposition of 322?
Abby Wiles, just to clarify, Steve and Savannah have openly said they're not botanists, but I feel like through this process, we've developed a bench of people who do know something about plants that we can go to for resources if there's ever a question of what's invasive or what isn't. So I'm confident that we've built a number of supporters and resources throughout this process that can help the inspectors as they move forward with enforcement of this ordinance.
Thank you very much. An amendment to bill number 322 has been moved and seconded. All in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number 3-22 is amended. May I have a motion on 322 as amended?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 322 as amended was passed, was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill as amended? Hearing none, Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright.
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 3-22 as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda is miscellaneous matters. Next unfinished business. Next on the new business, a vote to override or sustain the commissioner's veto on February 15th, 2022 regarding ordinance number 3422, the appropriation from the American Rescue Plan Fund. May I have a motion?
And make a motion that we override the veto?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to override the commissioner's veto, ordinance 3422. Any comments from any council member? Hearing none. Mr. Katanzright?
I just want to make a comment about the commissioner's veto. Given some of the public outcry about another issue that was brewing in the city and other concerns they had about fiscal management of the money, I can see where the commissioners might have felt compelled to veto this. I just, I hope the message got out, and I'm pretty sure it has by now, but the method of dispersing the money and accounting for the money probably needs to be improved. And I'm hoping that the recipient of this got the message and that they're going to work on a process that'll make it a better, better method of accounting so that we don't have these kind of issues going forward. But I would vote to, I would second, did someone second your veto? Your override? Okay, yeah. I would move to support overriding the veto also.
Thank you. Mr. Katanzright, any other comments from any council member? Hearing none, Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright.
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Let the record show that the motion to override the commissioner's veto was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes on items not on
Good evening. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. Having just gone through the, I can only call it dysfunctional redistricting process we just went through, I think it's pretty common knowledge that the council and the commissioners don't play well together. They can't sit and come up with an agreement to avoid everything that went on. I don't know if you've been hit with the bill from the attorney yet for the lawsuit that was brought and then dropped. But in that vein, I have contacted my state representatives from District Eight and asked them to please, well, under current rules, elected members of the county council and the board of commissioners are each beholden to voters in a particular district within St. Joseph County, often making compromise a difficult issue in the governance of St. Joseph County. At-large candidate county elections are the fairest way to elect candidates who truly are voices of a majority of the voters in St. Joseph County. In the contact I had with my two legislators, I asked that they pursue legislation to say that all members of the county council and board of commissioners be, number one, year-round residents of St. Joseph County, Indiana. Number two, elected at large by a majority of all legally registered voters in St. Joseph County. Each elected representative will be assigned a district of representation after taking the oath of public office following the November election and at the start of their four-year term. Residency in the district of representation is permissible, but not a requirement. There can be more than one qualified, involved, informed person from each district, so why limit a district to just one representative by the election rules? Number three, on identical, they'll be on identical four-year election cycles. Each of the nine seats of the county council and each of the three seats of the board of commissioners will be open for election on the same first Tuesday in November every four years. If we find out that none of the 12 are playing well together, we can throw out all 12 on the same day. If there's some, we can pick and choose rather than have some say, well, they're not up for election this year, so you're stuck with them for another two years. Everybody, same election cycle, elected at large, all members of, all voting members of St. Joseph County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor this Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Oble.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Did you oppose the adjournment?